Good morning. The, no, October, I'm on a roll. Let's just do this again. Good morning. The October 7th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order with a clerk. Please take the role.
Councilmember Revelle, councilmember Reed, councilmember Haddad-Cardis.
Recording in progress.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly, councilmember Harris.
What is it?
Councilmember Nguyen, councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns, suffered and Revelle are not here yet, and councilmember Mayor Biss.
Here. So we have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the morning. We'll start with public comment. We have one public commenter, so please, oh, I'm sorry, the podium has been reversed, so give us one moment for a quick change of scenery, and then please come forward. You'll have three minutes.
Well, small intimate gathering, this is nice, less intimidating. I'm Michael Mallory, and I'm from Connections for the Homeless. Some of you know me because I may spam your inboxes. Originally, I came here to beg all of you to include affordable housing as a goal and was tickled to see that on the sheet here, so thank you for making this a priority. One thing I do want to say is that I'm coming before you with a sense of urgency. I'll provide this after my public comment, but I want to share an article I read from the Wall Street Journal about the rising rates of homelessness for older adults, primarily the baby boomer population. And the article really cites that personal stories from these people are coming to homelessness because of the crazy increased rental rates that we're seeing across the nation, and Evanston is no different. So I'm here to ask, in your goal setting for today, please think about leaving a legacy, an evergreen type of goal, where this council can leave a mark for years to come about increasing affordable housing here in Evanston. The reason being is a considerable amount of the population is suffering from a cost burden for their price of housing compared to their income ratios. So all of you can make some change here to increase that. Some of you may not know, I've spent a majority of my career as a leader in permanent support of housing at Heartland Alliance, and I maintained over 200 units of housing. Over the steady years in the last five years, it became increasingly more difficult to locate affordable housing for our subsidy recipients, primarily due to the cost of rent outpricing our budget and fair market rates that HUD makes us abide by. So with that, I'm seeing this here at Connections, too, with our affordable housing subsidies. We're being outpriced in this region in Northern Cook County and may have to displace folks to different regions, meaning sending them away from families, their communities, an area they love, which is Evanston. So please consider thinking about increasing the number of affordable housing units in this goal, continue the hard work with the equitable zoning project that you're all going to be taking on, and consider the impact to the community if we continue to outprice people in this area. If we do, Evanston's at risk of losing what it is that makes Evanston such a special community. So thank you all for the work that you're doing, and I look forward to seeing what comes of this goal. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us this morning. That concludes public comment. Would please add councilmembers Kelly and Revelle to the role. This brings us now to call of the wards. Councilmember Revelle.
No report.
Councilmember Reed.
No report.
Is that a, is that a no report, but?
But, I am curious, I don't know if this is an opportunity, I don't know what the order of things is, and if we are going to break into the breakout tables, and this is an opportunity to speak to the whole group.
No, this is call of the wards.
No report.
Councilmember Haddad-Cardis.
No report.
Councilmember Kelly.
No report.
Councilmember Harris.
No report.
Councilmember Nguyen.
No report.
Councilmember Nusma.
No report.
All right, that concludes public, that concludes call of the wards. So we now move on to the main event of the morning, the city council goal planning session. So just to kind of recapitulate, because it's been a minute, we had several sessions earlier that resulted in narrowing goals down to the six that you see before you on this sheet, economic development, sustainability, public safety, finance, affordable housing, and public health. The direction to staff was then to take those broad categories and establish for our consideration, draft measurable goals that can guide our work and the organization's work for the next couple of years. What we have in front of us now are drafts of that. What I would hope that we can do is, during the course of the morning, go through these, raise any questions we have. I think essentially all of senior staff is on standby to address questions that we might have, make any needed changes, and then accept a potentially edited version of this that we can use to guide our work and also staff's work going forward. The recommendation was made that we, you know, rather than sit up here in this kind of formal eye contact free way, that we kind of repair to the area over there and sit together so that we can be more collaborative. So with everyone's, if everyone's comfortable with that plan, I would recommend that in a moment we just head over there and begin working through these goals. Before we do that, does anyone have any kind of questions or points they want to raise up here? Councilmember Reed.
Yeah. One, I mean, I forgot my glass today, so I can't make eye contact with anybody no matter where we sit, but I do think there is a value to, I mean, we're a small enough body to all of us just working together, and instead of splintering into several groups could be more productive. I do just want to say that, looking at the subgoals, you know, the big header goals, great, I agree with, there's one, there's one missing that I'd like to see, which is infrastructure, but we made our determination. But when I look at, you know, for example, I'll just pick one out, public safety, for example, and, you know, there are subgoals that, to decrease catalytic converter thefts by 10%, or fill 95% or more sworn officer positions by the end of 2024. I don't feel like those are council goals. I feel like those are department goals, that's what the department should be doing, but I don't know what this body up here is going to do specifically to decrease catalytic converter thefts, or, you know, as long as we have allocated the funding to the department, it's then not on us to fill the vacancies, it's on the staff to fill the vacancies. So I would just, I would like to see us hone in the goals so they are actual council goals rather than department goals. And I do think there is some value to, you know, maybe if there is a kind of bifurcated goal set where one were council goals and one were department goals, great, but what we're doing here today is council goals, and I'd just really like to see us focus on what this body, this legislative and appropriative, if that's a word, body can do.
I, I agree that, you know, we're in an open meeting, we have the opportunity to work together, I think it's productive to work together. I don't know that we would need to be over there and break into separate discussion groups. I just think it's easier to have a more free-flowing conversation in that physical environment. But if folks want to stay up here, that's fine. Again, my recommendation would be just to head over there, because again, I think it'll be a little bit more collaborative and feel, but what, does, does anyone else have a, want to weigh in on that question?
Can I just clarify?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me just clarify really quickly that the intent is not to break out into groups, it's just to physically sit over there and talk in a large group anyway, just so we can look at each other a little bit more easily, and there's not a plan to have you splinter off, if that changes your recommendation.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, I agree. I think it would be easier to discuss in more proximity.
All right, so with that, let's, let's head down there. And again, we're still in an open meeting, we're still, still all working together, and I look forward to the conversation.
They're readers.
Oh, no.
Or? Do I have to? Just like?
two items on our list are sustainability and resiliency, and then economic development. And you all, along with staff, have spent a lot of time and a lot of hard work putting together goals and timelines and lots and lots and lots of specifics around these things. And so instead of enumerating those yet again, we hoped that maybe we could say, for sustainability and resiliency, that we could just turn to CARP, because that's something that you all have approved. And same thing with economic development, the thrives report. Councilmember Reed. Then councilmember Revelle will be next.
Yes. I think that is a good path forward, although I think it would be, I mean, we've got a year and, what, a couple months left in this term. If we were to pluck a few things from CARP or economic development that we actually believe or set a goal of achieving five things from the punch list, or whatever it is, I think that'd be more useful. I want everything to have a metric, so we know if we succeeded. If it's just continue with the thrives or continue with CARP, did we do good at the end of the term, or did we not do good?
I guess, because both of those have metrics and timelines attached to them, so like if you, Kara is on, by the way, and she can speak to this, and councilmember Revelle will call in just a second, that she, you know, they've got, she's got a list of, like, this is going to happen in this month, and these are the numbers attached to it. So we can pull out what happens by the end of 2025, but again, I think we've already kind of approved those. Go ahead, councilmember Revelle.
Well, every year, the council approves a climate action agenda, and I would think that would be more specific than saying CARP goals, so, and I, we might even want to say fund and implement, you know, because I think the big challenge to us is providing enough funding so that those CARP, those climate action agenda goals can be achieved.
Councilmember Nusma.
I'll second what councilmember Revelle just said. I think the commitment to council should be to continue on an annual basis, you know, approve that year's or that ego year's set of CARP goals and commit to doing the funding that it takes. And we've got kind of a separate process with a lot of engagement, including staff, including the environment board, including the public, you know, kind of an infrastructure that is developed to feed that on an annual basis. So just kind of a commitment to continue to doing that process is what I would be looking for here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, I.
I want to talk about economic development, too. If we're going to do CARP first, we can come over.
Okay, let's do CARP first, and then you wanted to.
I'll comment, I agree with the comments made regarding CARP, that we should have some specifics for the public, and then I wanted to address economic development.
Okay. CARP?
Yes.
Okay, please, go ahead.
I don't recall every year this, this term passing a, and I don't recall seeing the outcome of, of those goals. So what are our 2023, 2024 goals?
Let's call on Kara, she's, because every year, she, she's.
Yeah, we've done this now twice. At the second council meeting in April, we've passed or approved the very specific set of objectives for the following 12 months.
And at that point, she gives an update on what happened the year before.
And also, part of this process is a six-month review, so that's going to be coming up later this month.
Kara.
Good morning, everyone. So I think what you're referring to is the 2023 CARP action agenda and the 2024 CARP action agenda. So as the council members have said, we have a draft version of the 2024 action agenda that we have been working on with department directors. The next step is to meet with each one of you individually to go through that list, and then to also discuss it at the environment board. And the plan is to bring that to city council on November 13th, is the date that we have in mind for that.
Well, then, you know, I, I feel, one, that's not every year, but unless there's a 2022, which I did not hear, and so I'm curious to see.
Yes, there is a 2022 action agenda as well.
Okay. And, okay. I'm curious to see the update on that, but if that's the case, and we're just going with continuing this action agenda, that, or implementing the action agenda, it seems that CARP kind of fits into the same category that we put equity in, which was, it was overreaching, or not overreaching, overarching. And I, still on CARP, but I do think that we should potentially switch out CARP for infrastructure. I think that's where we don't have the strongest annual goals. And it's not because I'm committed to CARP as well, I just think we, if this is what we're doing, if we have this annual plan and we've been following it and meeting the goals every year, I don't know if we need to add it here.
Well, I would say we have to have it on this list, because this signals our priorities, what we're going to commit to providing adequate funding for, and because, I mean, up until just a few months ago, we only had Kara doing all the work. Luckily, now she has two, two team members who are also helping work on some key issues, but if we don't have CARP on here, I, I think that diminishes our, our visible commitment to that topic.
So with regard to the 2023 action goals and those metrics, those were all met? I'm sorry, 2022, pardon me. Were the, were the 2022 action goals, did we meet those, and where would I find those? Are there metrics?
I can circulate the 2022 action agenda, and that report on the degree to which we met those goals would have been provided in April of this year. So if you watch back the April, I think it was 24th council meeting, that's where I reported on the 2022 goals, and then also, there's an October meeting in 2022 where I gave an update on that. So typically, I present in April and October each year. This year, we're doing it in November, just because of some staffing issues.
Great, thank you. So, but those can't, like, if somebody, a resident wanted to see if we were meeting our CARP action agenda for '22, would that be accessible online? Like, to see what, what our goals were, our action agenda? I mean, is that something, or is that? I mean, I'm just thinking, as we go forward, it would be nice.
We're working on that.
We're working on that, okay. So I would say the same thing, we should shoot for, for '24, that action agenda, and specify it with metrics that we, you know, the public can see.
So with the appropriate changes, are we comfortable accepting the CARP goal as resolved and moving on to economic development?
What if we, what are we?
I think we're proposing to not just say, continue with CARP implementation plans, which, by the way, I think the implication was exactly to continue to annually establish and then carry out an action agenda, but in fact, to just say that, so it would say, establish an annual CARP implementation action agenda and do it. So that's.
Start of wordsmithing.
Great. So then I think there were some comments on economic development, certainly councilmembers Nusma and Kelly mentioned they had comments.
And we can let Kara go. Okay. Right. Can Kara send out the 2022?
So Kara, thank you for, thanks for being available for this conversation. If you have a second to just email around the kind of links to the various packets that had the previous year's action agendas and reports, I think there's, I think some folks here just want to kind of be reminded of, of the action that we've taken on, on that. And with that, I think you've, you've, we're moving on beyond CARP, so, so thanks for your time this morning.
Great, thanks, everyone.
Great, thank you. So my comments are similar to those made regarding CARP for economic development. I, I don't think just saying, continue with thrives, thrives is more of a tool that we use, and I think we really should specify, again, you know, for residents, what are measurements and metrics that we can then assess, like decrease vacant storefronts by a certain percent, you know, those sort of concrete things, even if it's large, the overall thrives recommendations are large, I think we really need to specify something that we can measure, such as, you know, something that directly involves and impacts the revitalization of our business districts. So for example, like that decreasing vacant storefronts.
Took the words out of my mouth. I'd like to, I think thrive stays on the list, thrives is really important, thrives is this, is one means to an end of increased economic vibrancy in town. But thrives is more geared towards place-making and, and drawing folks in, but to have a metric tied to building vacancies, office vacancies, I'm not sure exactly what the appropriate metric would be, but I'd like to see something quantifiable like that. Because we can certainly measure our progress as we, you know, as we accomplish thrives objectives, we can check those off the box, but, but in and of themselves, that thrives is not going to directly drive economic vibrancy. Don't misinterpret what I'm saying, thrives is part of the plan, but we could have the nicest street signs and planters and still not have a vibrant economy. So I'd like to tie the metrics to the actual objective, which is, you know, economic life of the city. We might consider adding something that is tracking sales tax revenue with, but I would be hesitant of setting the, you know, kind of false objective of, let's just meet that by increasing sales tax. So we'd have to make sure we're careful about how we, how we elucidate that goal. I'd also like to see something probably in this category about special events, which in and of themselves are not, are not economic drivers, but I, maybe special events falls under thrives. So it might not have to be called out separately, but I, I would like to see an increased emphasis on arts and entertainment, and it might be worth calling that out separately from thrives.
So I think, before we move on, I see that Paul is in the Zoom, sorry, councilmember Reed. I think it'd be helpful to hear from Paul about this, because I think what's being asked is pretty, pretty significant, so I'd want to figure out quickly if that's something that we could do this morning or not.
I am sitting in a vehicle on Bluetooth, so please confirm you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Thank you. So yes, I mean, the, the actual collecting data and presenting it is, is quite easy. We can demonstrate changes in sales tax, hopefully decreases in vacancy. I would, I would warn that we think about that carefully in terms of, you know, do we take credit for it, or take responsibility for things that really the private market drives? But we, we definitely need to measure those things, because we, those are the only things that we can really compare year to year. And we did present to the Economic Development Committee over the summer a placer.ai dataset, and as we move forward with some of these events, as councilmember Nusma mentioned, we can certainly demonstrate how many people visited, or what, you know, what intensity of those visits are. Maybe it's, you know, maybe it's like, if you remember the maps, they were like red zones and blue zones, things like that. If economic development staff is going to be held accountable for vacancy rates, or anybody on the city staff, that, that goes into a bit of a dicey territory, just because we can't control necessarily what landlords do. We've had these discussions in the past, but again, those, those are all kind of good starting points. What questions do you have?
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah. So to, to the point that you just made about staff being held accountable, that's why I firmly believe these need to be council goals that hold us accountable and aren't making staff feel as though they are accountable to doing something. It's, it's meant to be a self-reflection of, or meant to tell us what to do. But I would agree with my colleagues that I do think that some clear metrics, you know, whether it be increase, sales tax, increase in the sales tax base, or, you know, looking at unemployment numbers. And again, I get Paul's point about, well, there are things that aren't directly controlled by the city and that the private market does. If I can, on this topic, but take us back to CARP for one second, similar here, I look at the, the CARP goals, the 2023 action agenda, and many of these aren't council goals, these are, you know, and they don't have clear metrics tied to them, you know, continue street lighting, street light. You know, continue street lighting, a street light LED conversion. And the same thing that Councilmember Newsma mentioned with the Evanston thrives. So I don't know if I personally am ready to support either one of these as goals. Is this going to come to council at a future date for actual adoption or are we adopting these goals here today?
We could do either one.
I would encourage us to not adopt today and maybe there's a group of whatever council members want to join and we work on setting actual council goals between now and whatever council meeting in a week or two and come back with, with some concrete measurable goals for the council.
Councilmember Reed, can I ask, can you, just so that I can understand, can you give an example of what a council goal would be versus a staff goal for any?
So for example, I think a good council goal, looking at finance, for example, is, not that I agree with this one particularly, but maintain a general fund reserve balance of.
Can I, I just want to, I want to ask a more pointed version of Allison's question. There are council actions, like for example, one goal for CARP could be pass an ordinance phasing out natural gas for new construction. Those are straightforwardly council goals, like do a thing up there. Anything else that's a metric of something that happens in the world is going to ultimately reflect, I think Allison is suggesting, on both staff and council. If it's a storefront vacancy rate, if it's unemployment, if it's total emissions, all of that is going to be some sort of mix of stuff we do up there and the way that actions are carried out by staff. And so I think the question is for stuff like that, that's like a metric of stuff happening out in the world, how do you establish those in ways that are truly only reflection of council and not staff?
That is, that is a good question. I don't know off the top of my head now, but what I can say is you mentioned a solid council goal. I think maintain a general fund reserve balance of 20% by 2025 is something that clearly the council has firmly within their control. And so I think it should really be intentional about making sure that these are clear council goals. And so maybe for carpets, allocate an additional, you know, staff determines that it's going to take $5 million to meet the goals, then it's fine $5 million to support our CARP objectives. If economic development says to implement, you know, some of the Evanston thrives initiatives or to create new initiatives that will encourage a reduction in vacancies will take, again, I'll just throw out $5 million, the goal would be, you know, allocate $5 million to the new, to the new goals. We have, or create a legal regime that would encourage that. If our goal is to reduce unemployment locally, maybe a policy that encourages folks to hire locally could be something we could do to achieve that goal. And so that's, that's what I'm looking for, clear council goals.
Councilmember Kelly and then Newsma.
That's okay. Yeah, so I agree. I think many of the goals interface with, between council and staff. And so for example, but I think they have to be meaningful for the public so that we actually have metrics and measurements, so it's not vague. So for example, saying to decrease empty storefronts by say 30% by the end of whatever year, that will, you know, to Paul's point, there are market forces, but there's also policy. So together we would have to figure out what can we do to achieve that. And so I think it is really important to have those concrete metrics that we can say, you know, we did it or we got this close, we got 90% there. That's, I mean, for this to be meaningful at all, we have to have that. I also think there's something about maybe a metric with regard to overall perception of our business districts, with regard to attractiveness and well-being in our business districts. And I think that could be demonstrated, for example, from a pre and post survey of the public to see if the public is feeling overall better about it if we have, you know, made improvements in those areas with regard to our business districts. So I just, I think, I think to Daniel's point that these do, staff and council, much of this is about working together. Thank you.
I would like to, I would like to leave this meeting with the formal approval of our high level goals. These are our priorities. These are city council goals, these are city goals. These are our priorities for the next year, next year and a half. I'm prepared to maybe punt on the discussion of the subgoals, but I think it's really important that we at least finalize the discussion about setting our high level priorities. I don't really look at this as our legislative agenda. And so I'm flexible with what goes under the metrics for those, for these goals. Some of them will be legislative, could be legislative, you know, some of them could be, you know, staff level, policy driven, but I think the main benefit of this entire discussion is to agree on our, like we're saying, top six priorities. And that helps steer us, it helps steer staff.
Well, I think we can all agree to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt.
First of all, let's add, let's add Councilmember Burns to the roll. So I'll just be really quick. So first of all, I think we can agree to do that. I think, I sort of thought we'd done that at the last meeting, but if not, let's do it today. I'm just, I'm a little anxious. I'm hearing a lot of different things. They're zooming off in a lot of different directions. There's a lot of, I think, good productive feedback that is going to be hard to corral into a coherent place. So just sort of thinking on the fly, this may be a terrible idea, I have many of those, but I think it might be productive to sort of continue going through the categories, hearing feedback both about the specifics and the sort of like type and style of some of these, these bullets. And then to Jonathan, to Councilmember Newsma's point, to then approve the six and then ask staff based upon the discussion that's gone on to refine and perhaps somewhat reorient what's under these for a future conversation. Because I don't think we're gonna do like a teamwork editing thing that's going to get us anywhere good. How does that course of action sound? Councilmember Reed?
Sounds good, although I think the only edit that I'd make is that, as I stated earlier, I think the council needs to be, I don't think we should just turn it over to staff and have staff come back with goals. I think that there should be whoever wants to be involved with it, a group that gets together and meets with staff to actually set the goals rather than just turning it over to staff, staff bringing back something that a majority of us aren't comfortable with or whatever the case may be, and then we punt again. So I think what we've shown is council needs to be involved in.
So I think if three people or fewer want to sign up for that, that's a thing that we could do. No, I understand, I understand one of the people who would sign up. Councilmember Revel.
We could assign each topic to an existing committee, so the Economic Development Committee could work on coming up with what the subgoals would be for economic development. And we need staff input. I mean, I, we'd be picking numbers out of the air this morning if we said, you know, reduce storefront vacancy by whatever percent we need. So I guess I would like to suggest that Economic Development Committee work on what would the specifics be there. Not sure who public safety would be, but there must be some committee. Human services, oh, great.
I mean, but can I just?
Sure.
I think your oh great is actually reflective of a broader question, which is like, how do we strike a balance between getting this right and overcomplicating it? And I don't want to overcomplicate it because at some point we want to spend more energy on doing the work. Councilmember Burns and then Kelly.
Yeah, and I tuned in online, so I think I'm pretty much caught up. But I, I've said this before in different ways, but for whatever reason, it seems like sometimes we're resistant to doing something that in my life has always worked, which is allowing a group of people, a larger group of people in most cases, space and over time, the ability to develop meaningful ideas and suggestions and recommendations. And that's why I like either one of those versions, either, you know, council convenes and figures it out, or I do also like the committee idea as well. I think we definitely need to do one of those because I, for whatever reason, we put a lot of pressure on ourselves to, on the, with one meeting, two meetings, three meetings, try to figure this out on the fly. And it's, I don't think that's going to work. And even if it does, I don't think it's going to reflect, you know, the, whatever the level of detail is, I don't think it's going to reflect what we really want out of this process. And so I just want to, I was going to say something else, but now that we have some actual suggestions out there on the, on the table, I would support any one of those.
I think we're approaching the point of overcomplicating this, so I'm going to advocate for something, for something simple.
Sorry, Councilmember Kelly was in line, I messed up there.
Thanks. So just to reinforce, I think, again, this has to be meaningful and not just an exercise in talking about our goals. And I think if you look back over the years with council goals, sometimes it looks like they just weren't even referenced throughout terms. So I do think the metrics, even if we only had one or two really specific goals with measurements so that the public can see, I think that would be significant. I mean, we're, we always care about economic development, CARP, finance, I mean, these are really broad. So again, I think we, to make this a meaningful exercise and for the public, for our residents and for our city, I think we have to have something absolutely that's, and that's available to the public in terms of measurements, to say that we met it or we didn't or we got close.
I think is not, I think if it'd been earlier in the process, it would have made sense for it to go to committee, but I think is not to continue to overcomplicate this. I think just a small group of council members who have the flexibility to meet a few times over the next couple of weeks with staff, you know, working with staff to develop actual measurable goals would be the most efficient way at this point to move forward.
I do want to just, in the, just in the spirit of avoiding throwing out the baby with the bathwater, I do want to stress that there's a lot of measurable goals on this piece of paper. I agree that some of them are a little less measurable than others, but like if you look at finance, like they're extremely measurable. If you look at the, you know, the, of the five bullets in public safety, the majority of them are very, very measurable. You know, the same is true on the backside. So I, I think the question about how to tease out what is staff's job and what is council's job is a valid and important question. I think the observations about the difference between just sort of saying continue with the Evanston thrives implementation versus pulling out some specifics is well taken. But I, I don't, I don't look at this and say like, well, clearly we ought to throw this out and start from scratch. I think that would be a waste of some actual valuable work that went into this. Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, the other thing I just want to say is, you know, I don't think just meeting in and of itself is complicated. And if it is, if somebody could explain how that in and of itself makes something complicated. So I think we're kind of misusing that before it's appropriate. We're just saying, let's meet on a more consistent basis so we can finish this. And I think when we do, whether it's committee or a small group of council members, we should absolutely reference everything that we've been provided up until this point. I also think, Mayor, that we should continue what we're doing today, going through each list and providing some feedback. But I don't think meeting on a, you know, if we could, if, even if we did this in like three consecutive meetings and were very intentional about providing feedback, we were more direct, maybe with staff on what we were looking for, maybe that would have resulted in a different outcome. But I don't think meeting in and of itself makes this more complicated. I think we can just knock it out. You know, I'd be happy to serve if somebody else wants to serve. I do think it's something that council should lead on, this is, these are council goals and priorities. So I do think it's important that we're driving this. And the last point I'll say is I don't see any, I agree, to me, I feel like some of these goals, there may be council responsibility as well as staff, so I'm not necessarily uncomfortable with that. I don't need every single thing to boil down to something that we can only do as council. I think there'll be a mix. And then I know Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So I think when I'm looking at them, like what are the actions that we can do? And so for like public safety, establish a two-way online. For us as a council, we can fund that. We can say our priority is to fund something on here that we see we want to have happen. That is within our jurisdiction to put money and energies behind public health, continue and expand. We can fund the general income pilot program. So if we go through and find the verbs of, you know, the actions that we can do as a council, I think that will help narrow it down because I don't want to start over. It took us too long to get here. So what actions are we going to do with these? And I just wanted to circle back and be really clear. We did say equity was going to lead, and I know this is a draft, but I expect to see language saying that, that equity will prevail in all of these areas. And I know this is just a draft, but I want to see that language each time we come to these so that we're clear that that doesn't get lost and misconstrued. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
I thought, just to simplify this, what if each committee just came up with one measurable goal? I mean, so like finance, economic development, just mean to keep it simple. So one feasible goal that would serve our city well, just but one metric, one goal. As opposed to a committee of three, you know, sorting through all these, these various departments and areas, just a thought.
This process has been dragging out for a couple of years. So I am in favor of drawing this process to a close as soon as we reasonably can. I think what's complicating this is the discussion of these subgoals or metrics. And somebody who has been around longer than I can might be able to speak to this, but it's my understanding that previous city councils just focused on the top level priorities without getting into the weeds that is leading to this very interesting and illuminating discussion. So is that, is that true? In that, it's at that point where the discussion can get dragged out and continue to become more and more complicated rather than less complicated. So I'm going to advocate approving our top level goals and leaving it at that, at least as step one. If we want to continue working on subgoals, let's have that discussion kind of separately. But I would like to tell my constituents that this city council has finally, two and a half years into our term, approved some goals for ourselves. And these are, these are those six.
That is true. In the past, we have looked at these as high level goals with some specifics, but not the granular level of detail that we're discussing here. And because I do think that this, the goal is to have the goals. And, and the mayor is right, that, you know, under public safety, under finance, there, these are very detailed, measurable things that the council can do, the council has control over. So I think, I agree with Jonathan, the, there's a, there are many, many things that we have as goals in economic development and in CARP, but, and to try and put every one of those down. But, and to try and put every one of those down is, I think, not a useful use of our time.
I too want to tell my constituents that we have goals, although I don't know if I really care about telling them that we have goals. But I want to tell them that we have done something, that we have achieved something that is measurable, is what I want to tell my constituents. And I think, you know, just high-level goals, I don't think that really gets us there. It doesn't, you know, I can't, it's nothing that I think we can really achieve. And I think by having more specific goals that are, you know, under these broad categories, it will help us actually, if we can agree on these things as our goals, then we should be able to achieve them and actually get them done over the next year. And so I think that is the point of the exercise, is to give us an actual roadmap as to what are we going to do in regard to public safety? What are we going to do relating to CARP or economic development over the next year and a half? And without actual goals, as my great-grandmother might say, we're going to be running around like, that's kind of a violent metaphor, like chickens without their heads. And so, yeah, I would advocate that we get specific goals here and move forward with that.
So I would say it sounds like we're kind of split on this. I would go with just those headings and eliminate everything below it and call it a day. I really don't think, unless we're going to do something really with metrics, it's just not meaningful for us to sit here and talk in, you know, about what we want and what we don't want and who's going to do it. I just say we go with, just eliminate the bullet points, go with the headings and wrap up. That's what I would propose. But I would want to eliminate because I do have concerns about some of the things listed under there. And since we don't want to get into a big, you know, a lot of discussion. Otherwise, I would say the public deserves metrics, clear metrics with, we're going to hit this amount or this much, and this is how we're going to measure it. Otherwise, I think we should wrap up.
I guess a question for staff, if, just to use economic development as example, is Paul, Paul, are you still with us?
I am still here.
What do you feel about the Economic Development Committee becoming a venue where we try to identify, it's been called subgoals or objectives for economic development in this example?
I believe that there are kind of a finite set of measurements or metrics that we should be tracking anyway. I'm wanting to just warn us again that, and I'm not just saying, I'm not worried about staff being held accountable. I'm just worried about setting the expectation that the city has control over some market forces. We can tame it on the edges, but we can certainly, with, for example, we want to implement events in downtown and we're going to come to the council, remember, we have this priority tool that we created. We have top 10 goals, right? We can, and I'll be, I promise I'll be very quick. When we acquire placemaking equipment, we should be doing that with the goal of attracting more customers to drive additional sales tax. We want to measure sales tax. And then over a couple of year period, we really should see vacancy rates decline as we shift into whatever our new economy is in downtown. Also waiting for office workers to come back or not. So yes, we should be challenged at the staff level at Economic Development Committee to show a clear dashboard and to define what those measurements are. I'm just concerned that if we fall short on bringing a vacancy rate down because, God forbid, there's another pandemic or some other thing, that there isn't accountability at the political or staff level. But we should be doing, we should be measuring the metrics that Councilmember Kelly is pointing out, no question. And we're committed to creating a new dashboard to present that.
Yes. I guess what I'm hearing there, aside from a considerable concern about vacancy rates being added, is that, you know, our economic development manager is saying that this is something that he would like the Economic Development Committee to do anyway. And so, I mean, I would feel comfortable, you know, adopting the, just the headline goals, the header goals or whatever today. I still think we need objectives. I feel like I saw some landing page at some point of the previous council that not only had kind of the header goals, but also objectives. So I know that work was done. Now whether it was done, you know, whether staff did it on their own or did it with committee or council participation is another question, but they are there. And I think we certainly need them. The question is, how do we get there? And I believe that we have some time. Once we adopt the main goals, we should allow time, either council time or committee time is probably best, right? It's mostly a composition of council, community members and staff. That's a perfect composition to do something like this. So I would say let's take the pressure off ourselves of trying to develop everything around our goals and priorities today. You know, and send some of this, refer some of this to either committee or a committee to get us the rest of the way. But again, I still see value in us continuing on providing some feedback on what we have in front of us today.
Thank you. I'm fine with that. I mean, ultimately, this body is going to make all of the decisions anyhow. So if we just want to adopt these headlines, I will say that, you know, one person's view of public safety, if we just have that as a headline, one, not that anybody here has said this, but, you know, there could be the council member who believes that increasing public safety is defunding our police department and having some alternative. There could be someone else who thinks that public safety is putting more police officers on the street. And if we don't have a clear goal that we've adopted, I think we're just going to, we're not going to be moving correctly. But I think at this point, I think it seems that there's enough support to just adopt the headlines. And so we should maybe think about where things are going. I mean, economic development obviously go on to Economic Development Committee. CARP, there's only one council member on the Environment Board.
I think we're good with CARP, with the discussion we had earlier. You know, we have the practice that is hopefully going to be baked in perpetuity of approving an annual CARP implementation plan. So I think we're good with CARP in that. I mean, Finance and Budget Committee would be the appropriate place to develop some financial, you know, kind of subgoals.
Is HCDC the place for affordable housing?
Seems like the reasonable place, and then which leaves public health and public safety.
Yeah, Human Services, I guess.
I mean, Human Services is different than those other committees in that Human Services is only council members.
Correct.
And less of a working group kind of tradition than the other committees are.
Would the, would the Social Services Committee be the group to take one, like public health? I don't know, or?
I'm on Social Services Committee, so is Councilmember Burns. Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
So I'd like to suggest that we change it from city council goals to another word because truly, if we really can't measure something, it's not a goal if we say public safety, if we say finance. So can we just say like focus? Prior, well, no, because priority finance? Yeah, I think, I think we should just say focus. I mean, we really, it really should be something measurable if we're going to call them goals. And I'm fine with just, you know, finishing off with these headlines. But if we're going to talk right now, we'll be here all day if we start trying to figure out what we want to. And we should have. I continue to think that the public deserves measurable goals with metrics that we can, but I don't think that's going to happen here. So I would just ask that we change it from goals to.
So we have staff that are online, some of which are out of town or traveling. So I just wonder, I think we had solidified CARP. Are we comfortable with economic development using Evanson Thrives as the roadmap or is that not the case?
I think based on where this conversation is at this time, it's not particularly a great use of staff time on a Saturday morning to hang out on a Zoom. I don't think it makes, and I think we're actually sort of close to consensus or maybe at a consensus that we're not going to like dig in on the details. So I would, I would recommend that you release staff. I think what we're going to do is perhaps with a very, very modest word change, accept the headlines and then figure out where to go from there. But I don't, I don't think, you know, Chief Stewart and Sarah and Paul need to be blowing up their weekend anymore at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Winn and then Reed.
I think I'm a little bit confused because these were our, these were goals that we discussed and at the last goal-setting session. And I don't necessarily, I mean, I agree with these. These were things that we all talked about. And so are we, I, just adopting the top line, to me, I don't want it just to be the headings. But to me, under affordable housing, these are reasonable goals for the city council to work on. And public health, these are reasonable goals for the city to work on as well. I don't know whether we can reduce citywide smoking by that, but it's always a goal. But so, I mean, this is all good work that we did, and I don't think, we don't want to throw these out, do we? Is that what we're discussing doing?
Well, I don't, I think that is what we're discussing doing, and I'm with you on, I'm with you on this. So my, my.
Yeah, I mean, to me, this is, there's nothing unique about this. What we will be doing is not throwing it out, but simply saying these one, two, three, four, five affordable housing objectives, we're going to refer to the HCDC Committee to review and, you know, provide input. And they may say, come back and say, yep, these are good, and send it right to council for us to vote. Or they may tweak something about it, and that's what we do all the time. So let's see this as a referral.
I just would caution that I think if we go back out to committees, I think it's just going to really drag the process out. Staff is really anxious to solidify these goals and then align our work plans to these goals and get moving forward as we have 18 months left in this term. So I just, I'm concerned about getting bogged down further. I respect your position on this. I just think we're just really anxious from a staff perspective to lock this stuff in. And a lot of this that is on paper is from all of you or from some of you that we got, we received feedback. We worked with staff, Allison sent out this draft a long time ago to get feedback. I think we only had feedback from three or four members. We're bringing it back. We were hoping that this document is 90% done today. Obviously, we expected some changes or minor modifications, or maybe we swapped one out for another. But we were hoping that this was 90% of what you were looking for today.
Yeah, and just as a response to that, I mean, I think one could argue that although this is something that council should approve, that really everything we do should have some element of public input. Which aside from somebody being able to provide public comment, which I think we all would agree, you know, we've learned, if we haven't learned anything, we've learned that that's probably not the best way to engage with the community, that we're still lacking some other way to get input. And I think we have some examples of when we do it well. So I don't see just sending, referring these, even saying one meeting for committees to review and with the expectation that we can have something passed next month is going to set us back any more than we already are. But I agree, it is something that I would even like to see us get passed soon. I just, I think that one extra step is not going to set us back, you know.
The only other thing I would add is there are quite a few metrics on this document. And we're happy to, if you want to add a few additional ones today, we're happy to do so. Or, you know, if 20% is not right, it should be 10 or 30%, we're happy to do that too.
And I also said I'm fine to walk through it today. We spent a lot of time just talking about where this gets referred to or not. I said consistently that I would like to provide some feedback. Apologize for being late. I do have comments still about CARP in terms of whether or not CARP, to take us back there then, provide a feedback. My questions around CARP are, what to me, I'm most concerned about around CARP is, is what are we doing around educating the community before we, you know, as we're making these decisions, before we make these decisions? What are we doing to help subsidize some of these programs before we just move ahead with mandates? What are we doing to subsidize them? Is that a part of the action plan? And then I'm also concerned, I think those are the two-way points. I may have some others. So if Kira is still, she's not with us, okay. So I do have questions about CARP. I have questions about all these. So we could continue and see what we can get done today and then at the end determine what we want to do next.
Councilmember Ravel?
Two things. So in response to the CARP comments, when we, when we get the proposed CARP implementation action agenda for the year, we, the council, have an opportunity to comment to make sure, for example, that there's, you know, ample public input for various issues or, you know, what are we doing to provide funding to help people, you know, comply with whatever policies are being proposed? So I think there's an, even though, so we could say right now, implement, fund and implement the climate action agenda for each year. But we will still have an opportunity to comment on those action agendas when they come to council. And then looking at the affordable housing goals and knowing what the HCDC agenda is for the next few months, as jam-packed as it is, I do think that, I mean, I have a couple of minor edits to it because I think the, just because of the realistic timeline issues. But I can't imagine that the committee would have any disagreement with what those being, where our focus should be.
Allison? All right, Councilmember Reed?
I don't know where we're going right now, but depending on where we are, I agree with Councilmember Ravel. I mean, HCDC, for example, is a committee that has a lot on its plate already. And I don't know how much time the committee, without it being disruptive to the work that the committee has already decided to do, how much time we, that committee could dedicate to these goals or to sorting through the goals. I would go back to, maybe it makes sense to have a committee of a few council members get together, work with staff, work with community to come up with a few goals. And again, you know, for economic development, there are metrics that we can directly be held accountable to. For example, you know, fund or with our procurement, increase our MWEB procurement by, I'm just throwing random numbers out, 5%, 10%. That's something we can be held accountable to. And I think those are the kind of goals that we should be looking for over the next year. That's it.
I guess I'm sort of, I just want to sort of repeat something Councilmember Winn said earlier. It's like, there's a lot of that here. When I repeat something Luke said earlier, it was emailed to everybody in council. I don't remember when, I'll be honest, but not particularly recently. I'm not sure what the point of throwing it out and starting over would be. I just don't understand what that achieves. And so, well, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, again, looking at the goals, looking at public safety, fill 95% or more sworn officers by the end of 24. This body has done its job already. We have provided the funding for the positions. What, I don't know, what are we supposed to do now to make sure that the department fills its vacancies? I don't know what the step that the council would take.
And if council doesn't like that particular bullet point, then we're happy to swap it out for something else today.
Decrecratic converter thefts by 10%. What is the council going to do to? What is the council going to do to decrease catalytic converter thefts?
Again, if, if council doesn't like that particular item, then let's swap it out for a different one.
And I mean, but I, I don't really want to get drawn into an argument of a specific bullet here, but that's a national crisis where a lot of different communities are trying a lot of different things, many of which are passed by city councils. Like there's, there's a variety of different programs. There's a partnership with the county sheriff's office that is, you know, that we could amp up. There's a, there's a, you know, that's not something that it would be unusual for a city council to engage in and enact policies relative to.
And if it's, if it's too specific, we could say strive to reduce crimes, property crimes, right? If you want something that's a little more broader, and then that's a metric or sub-goal for staff underneath that item.
Just a quick, I, I think the, the main thing that is being suggested here is that is, is the, are, should amendments be made on the fly as we're thinking of them and then we just go with it? I think that's the only thing that we should be considering next before hopefully we jump back in and continue going through all the, the bullet points. And we do this all the time at council, where we'll say, let's not figure this out on the fly, right? Let's share, let's share, share what we can in the meeting and then let's set aside some time to like fine tune. And so I think the question is whether staff does that on their own, which I believe was suggested earlier, whether or not council participates in that at all, or whether or not a broader group of community members, council and staff participate in that. That, I think that's, it's, and there's nothing controversial about that. We do that all the time.
The concern, the concern is that the conversation so far has not inspired a lot of confidence that we're directionally close, which is frankly, I think, surprising and disappointing to the people who have been doing the work and checking in with council and not being redirected prior to now. And so the plan originally was exactly what you just said, like, go through these, have a conversation, figure out if there's anything that needs to be tweaked so modestly that we just do it on the fly, and figure out if there's anything that needs to be tweaked a little bit more modestly so that that could be done offline over the course of the next few weeks. But it's sort of sounding like people are wanting to zoom off in a lot of different directions from here, and that's, I think, thrown us into a little bit of crisis about now what.
I think we're close. I mean, there's some outliers, there's always going to be outliers on council, which is why we vote on things and, and, you know, the consent, you know, the five of us determine how we move forward. And I think that should, if it needs to be the case here, it should be the case. So I think we actually are close. When you, when you, when you tune it into what five of us are comfortable moving forward with, I think we're very close. For example, I don't necessarily need to see vacancy rates personally. I, I, I like what Paul said about visitation, though. I do think that's something that, that we can focus in on. I, I think most of the Evanston Thrives work that we, that, that we, most of Evanston Thrives recommendations focus around place making, and, and then we also have the Placer AI data and other tools that we can use to not only understand what attracts people to, to, to certain business districts, but we can, you know, we, we can track at this point, you know, how frequently people are visiting different business cores, how long they're staying. Like, there's a lot of data that we can get just through Placer AI alone. So I do think we're close, because again, I, I would support, you know, focusing the economic development metrics to visitation and probably some other areas as well. So again, to go back to my point, I, I don't think the right characterization for this is, is throwing anything out because we rarely do that. But it's what we do at council every meeting is, it's a work in progress. We start with something and then we make amendments, we fine tune it, and then we, we pass a, you know, we pass a final policy. I think that's what we're doing here. We're not throwing anything out. The question is, is it something we want to just give back to staff or do we want any council participation in between final adoption? But I don't think we should pass anything tonight or today. I think we should provide feedback and then maybe at our next council meeting adopt it. But I, I don't think it's good practice to, to do these things on the fly.
So I don't think that everything, I think some things are executed by staff and don't necessarily need council action for a goal. I don't think everything has to be some kind of a council involvement or action we set a goal. And also, I think we should always be thinking like, how are we going to, what are, what are we going to expect in terms of a report up for progress at mid-year? And I think the simpler, the better, each of the goals. And so, you know, again, if we can just take the top, I mean, I have some serious concerns about the one under, the points under finance, and I don't know if this is, if we're going to talk about these or not, but if we aren't going to talk about each bullet point and decide to leave it here today, I'd say, let's just go back with these overarching, you know, top focus or priorities and then, you know, if we can then summarize it with a few simple achievable measurable goals for each, that'd be fine. But if we are going to continue, continue on each of these, I do have comments about the finance. So I just, I'm not sure where we're going.
Good. We're at the point now where the perfect is becoming the enemy of the good. And I would like to, as expeditiously as possible, draw this whole process to a close so we can actually get to work on this stuff. So here's what I'm going to propose, and this is going to take a few minutes to explain, but I'm going to propose that today, right now, we make a motion and it's seconded and we vote to approve these six top level goals. Let's get that behind us. And then look at each, looking at each category specifically, I'm going to go through that right now. Economic Development Committee, let's throw that, or the Economic Development Goal, let's throw that to the next meeting of EDC to kind of confirm what those goals are, and then, you know, they come back to us. CARP, I think we're done now. I'm comfortable with where we're at based on the discussion we had earlier. Public Safety, I'm not quite so sure how we handle that one, so I'm going to come back to that. The Finance Goals, I think, would benefit from a robust discussion at the Finance and Budget Committee, their meeting next week. Let's put that on the agenda and knock that out and get this done. Affordable Housing is HCDC?
Yeah, it's, it should be very straightforward.
So it would be fairly straightforward to give that to HCDC to validate, you know, validate these, these sub-goals. So that's the path forward for affordable housing. Public Health?
I mean, we've never talked about bikes or.
Yeah, so, you know, Public Health and Public Safety, I don't have, at this point, you had a clear vision of how to expeditiously get through these, open to suggestions, but how does this general approach strike you?
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, generally okay with it. So if we are going to kick this stuff to committees, then.
So, but let's right now.
If not, I do have.
Let's approve those top six and then let's talk about, let's make productive use of our time now. And hopefully we've all done enough homework that we as a, you know, as a council right now can kind of weigh in on some of these areas and that will provide some guidance and, and discussion points for the committees that will be taking these up.
I, I, sorry. I just want to add one thing. If we're now, if we're just now adopting the six goals, I, I made a push for it before to include infrastructure. We have seen recently with discussions around CIP that that really is, it has to be one of our top goals. I mean, it's just one of the basic functions of government. I would encourage us to include infrastructure as, as well. We've got $200 million for facilities, $100 million for roads, bridges and other infrastructure. It, it is a huge outstanding issue for us.
It, it, it's also a huge financial commitment.
Could it be financed? That's what I was going to say, could it go under finance?
It's financed.
I mean, I think, I think, go ahead. I think that the fact that we're having this conversation now when we resolved that this question six months ago is, it's like an explanation of why this whole thing is going on the way it is.
Well, it shouldn't have taken six months. You should have met more regularly.
I think we should, we've got to be willing to move forward and to accept decisions that we've made. Councilmember Harris?
I move for the adoption of the one, two, three, four, five, six city goals that we have listed.
I will second.
All right, so Councilmember Harris moves for adoption of the six, the six headers. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the six top line items are adopted as goals. I think that Councilmember Newsma's proposal is, I, I don't, like, it, it's great, but the hole is a really important hole, the public safety and public health hole. I don't think the right answer there is to kick it to some committee just because it would be nice if they were the right committee to kick it to. I agree with Councilmember Reed that Social Services isn't it. I think Human Services isn't it. So maybe we should focus our conversations this morning on those two and see how close we feel and then use that conversation to figure out if we need a next step of that level of complexity.
So before we get there, I will make the following motion, that we refer the Economic Development Discussion to the Economic Development Committee, we refer the Finance Discussion to Finance and Budget, and we approve the CARP sub-objective as we have discussed it earlier today.
Sorry. I want to make sure I understand.
I just, I want, I want to.
Do you say the EDC, CARP thumbs up?
Sorry, EDC, CARP thumbs up, Finance and Budget, and HCDC? Were those four things all in your motion?
Maybe we'll just take them one by one. I will, I move that we approve, retract my previous motion. What I am now.
Hold on one second, Allison?
Let's take CARP out.
What? Do what I want? Okay.
EDC goes to, Economic Development goes to EDC. CARP, we're done with. Finance goes to Finance and Budget, and Affordable Housing goes to HCDC.
Friendly amendment, if you can just refer the items to committee and then separately move to approve CARP, that would be appreciated.
I think there's going to be no votes.
There's going to be, yeah.
Okay, two separate motions.
Okay. So Councilmember Newsma moves to refer the Economic Development Conversation to the Economic Development Committee, to refer to the, the Finance Recommendations to the Finance and Budget Committee, to refer the Affordable Housing Recommendations to the Housing and Community Development Committee. And I think Councilmember Winn seconded, is that right? All right, Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
I'm so bad at this. Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
So seven in favor and none voting against, those three items have been referred to those three committees. Now your next motion.
The next motion is that we approve the CARP language as we previously did not completely define on the floor, but the general gist of which we all agreed to.
So Councilmember Newsma moves that we approve the CARP language, which is the continuing, the continuing development on an annual basis of CARP action plans and the, of, of CARP implementation action plans, as well as the execution on an annual basis of those, of the annual, of the action plans. Councilmember Harris?
Including funding.
Include, you're right, correct. Councilmember Harris, including funding of the needed, providing the needed financial support to effectuate the execution. Councilmember Harris seconds.
Or discussion.
Yep. Councilmember Burns, followed by Kelly.
Okay, again, are there measurable goals with time for the year '24? Are there simple, I mean, not just we're going to keep moving, but, okay, great.
We don't have them for '24 yet because the process.
We'll adopt them ultimately.
But I mean, I, I hope I'm not being too negative here, but I do want to stress, like, you guys have approved these annually and, and I, I've always been really happy to see you approve them unanimously annually, and I thought that was deliberate and, you know. So now we're just, we're just saying like thumbs up on that process. And both that we'll continue to approve those annually and that we, as a council, will fund the implementation of those.
They're not a goal, we're just approving the process.
I guess the goal is that we will continue to approve the annual.
Well, I mean, there are, there are 20, 23, and Councilmember Newsma did refer to what, what he calls the eco year, I think. It's these, this, this is sort of a process that like resets every April. So we're kind of halfway through the eco year at this time.
And I think as long as it would be appropriate to include like changing staff needs around addressing, implementing CARP in this action plan, as I said, funding subsidy programs, identifying opportunities to make sure that local workforce development is tied into every facet of this, then fine. But I want to make sure that that's the appropriate place to call those things out and to make sure we're funding them. And, and if not, then I would like to make sure those are integrated within council goals.
Councilmember Kelly?
So, thank you, Councilmember Newsma, for showing me this, the action plan for 2023. I would just ask that they be more measurable and concrete because, as opposed to just order electric vehicles. I mean, I think we really need to have goals and we shoot for it, we get close to it. Nobody necessarily is holding anybody to getting to 100%, but we should have goals that are more measurable.
I got one of those. And I, I agree with that. I think, again, if we're saying that when this goes to council, that's the time to have that discussion, then I'm fine with that. Yeah, okay.
All right, Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
All right, with seven in favor and none voting against, that motion carries as well. So now, so now we, I think we should talk about the public safety items. Councilmember Reed?
Yes. When I look at the five bullet points here under public safety, I, I would just need to hear more, you know, I've mentioned the decreased catalytic converter thefts by 10%. I'd want to hear what the police department feels the council's role can be in that. And I get some of my colleagues are saying they don't all have to be council goals, although that goes back to the point of, you know, staff not wanting to feel as though that they aren't, you know, meeting these metrics, so it's, but, you know, establish a two-way online communication platform between EPD and the community that allows EPD to send notifications such as crime alerts, traffic alerts. I mean, we, we saw the new app that was rolled out. It seems like it's already done. I, I don't know if we need to put this on as a goal. You know, implement an alternative response program to address low-level non-violent issues in 2024. Success will be measured by the portion of calls for service that are diverted to this channel. Well, what is our goal for the portion of calls that are diverted? If we just get 1%, do we celebrate because we've gotten 1% or, you know, I think we, again, need a metric there. It'd also be helpful to know where we are. It says, so next goal, fill 95% or more of sworn officer positions. I don't know where we are now, what percentage we're at. And is, I think, a normal vacancy rate, maybe manager Stowe is, not in the police department, but across the city, is 2% to 3%?
It's closer to 5% right now, actually.
Well, right now, but in a normal year.
Two or three, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Do you know what the vacancy is in the police department now?
Chief, do you want to weigh in on the vacancies for sworn officers as of now?
Chief, I think you're muted.
My apologies. I believe I do want to weigh in on a lot of these goals we came up with months ago. And even with the app, we were proactive in trying to establish that, but I think we're, we're talking about the goals for 2024. I know Councilmember Reed brought up where at, respectful. But I think we're, we're talking about the goals for 2024. I know Councilmember Reed brought up where at respectfully, but we've, we've been working on a lot of these since we've come up with them.
Uh, do you know what the vacancy rate is now? Are we at 90% positions filled or 94%? And maybe if you just-
I think, I think we're, I think we're probably right around 90% right now.
Maybe our mathematician mayor, if you just give us the raw numbers, he can tell us the percentage. Okay.
At what, at one point, we were kind of bottom out in the high 80s, like around 87, 88%. I think we're probably at 90 or a little higher than 90.
How many vacancies do we have now?
So at one point, we were down 19. Chief, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, at one point, we were 19 or 20 down. I'm not sure if you know as of now.
That was a few months ago. I remember that, 19. I know beginning of the year, we were 27, 20 something, or certainly beginning of the term.
Beginning of my term, we were 28. I'd have to check. We've got a retirement coming up of a commanding position and added. And I know we have a few people going through the background, but if you'd give me some time, I'd be able to email council on that.
And then, if, can you, what does it mean to? I don't know. How do we measure maintain department integrity by enforcing appropriate laws without bias by monitoring complaints through OPS?
We, we get those complaints that come in from residents or community members. And so right now, I'm meeting monthly with OPS to ensure that we establish there's no bias based policing that is connected to that. Instead of just taking the complaint, saying these complaints are documented, we're initially filing up to ensure that if the complaint was made with a bias that did not occur, and if so, the appropriate action being taken.
Just let me, just jump in here, I think, because I'm hearing a lot of, you know, there's a lot, a lot of push from council members to make sure these are as measurable as possible. With the right, I mean, obviously complaints made is a problematic metric. Substantiated complaints is a much, you know, one that we, that's what we want to avoid. Is there, I mean, do you have thoughts about kind of what, I mean, what are at this time, the outcomes of the complaints? And is there, is there room for improvement there that we should lay out in a kind of quantifiable way?
I'll just throw one suggestion out there. I noticed that on the app that was presented to us, there was a place for commendation of officers, which I think is important, but there wasn't room for even, and I know there's a state, state law about the process of filing a complaint, but there wasn't a, anywhere on the app that you could just take in a complaint and begin that formal process down the road.
We take complaints all, you can call in a complaint, you can email. Our transparency, there, there are multiple ways to do a complaint. But I can look into that. That's not an issue.
Councilmember Newsma, and then Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I think of public safety and, you know, the concerns of fourth ward residents and stakeholders, kind of the, the number one call I have has to do with antisocial behavior is the word I'll use. Everyone knows what I'm talking about, which may or may not involve actual breaking of laws, but still, I think fits into public safety. We've also addressed it perhaps under, under public health and perhaps under thrives and economic development. But I would like to see, if it's possible, a more explicit acknowledgement that we have work to do in terms of reducing panhandling, both legal and, and aggressive and illegal panhandling, reducing other antisocial behavior, having a more robust and quick response to mental health incidents, making sure all of the city departments and outside partner agencies that are involved in addressing these, these issues are more effectively collaborating. This is my wish list. I'm not sure at this point how we boil this down to, you know, a cogent and quantifiable bullet point. So I'm just throwing this open for discussion.
Develop a comprehensive strategy with all these various entities that you've mentioned to come up with a, develop and implement an action agenda.
I, I like where you're going. Yeah, develop a comprehensive strategy in partnership with, you know, community partners to take care of this problem.
Can I jump in here, council member?
Yes.
And I kind of get that point where I was trying to, and I think staff was trying to address that with that, implement an alternative response to those low-level non-violent type of issues. But I do believe you're correct. It could benefit us to do it on a broader spectrum.
This is not, you know, we're, this is under the public safety category, so, but I just want to make, make it clear, public safety is not limited to Evanston Police Department. This is more of a, in this particular case, this is a broader concern that goes across different departments and partner agencies.
I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would agree. I think that's a, really a top concern for the community, and it'd be good for us to be highlighting it.
So I think one potential way to measure is through quantifiable surveying, where we set a certain number, a minimum number of responses or percent of responses of the population with regard to some of the comments that Councilmember Newsma made and others, such as the first bullet point. I think that's one way to get some sort of a quantifiable report with regard to progress. So both to, to the first bullet point, yeah, to point one, and, you know, dovetailing on Councilmember Newsma's points. I think that, you know, if a survey's developed for the, for the, for residents, and then a follow-up survey at mid-year to measure feedback. I think that's, I'm just trying to think in terms of how we measure progress, and I think that that could be one way.
I think for, if, I think there's a goal about the community app. We should probably include, to make it more measurable, probably include registration rate by community members and setting a goal. So, right, yeah. So downloaded registration rate, et cetera. What else do I have here? And then, for the, hold on, let me make sure I'm using the right, for the alternative response program, and we may not necessarily have this number now because this is, this still needs to be discussed, but I think we should look at the amount of calls or types of calls diverted from how we currently respond to them to whatever the new thing becomes. We're not really ready to do that, but eventually, if we, if we decide to adopt this bullet point, I think a, a council goal should focus more on a percentage of diverted or a type of diverted calls rather than what I see here, just to make it more measurable.
So I think this has been, and I know we've only talked for a few minutes, but I, I think it's important to come out of here without just like an overwhelming avalanche of direction. I feel like this has been direct, specific feedback on a few of these bullet points. I guess the question really is for Luke, Allison, and Chief Stewart. Do you feel, do you feel like that there's been enough kind of clarity and specificity to this conversation that you've got, that you can go away from it? And perhaps in individual conversations with the various council members who had some concerns, kind of develop a next, next draft?
Chief, do you feel like you have enough direction?
Yeah, I do. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the input. I think it's all relevant and good. I, I think we can narrow this down. That's not going to be an issue at all on follow-up on some of it from the app. Also to the alternative response, I'm already kind of working on that for documentation of report writing and those calls on, on, on a broader spectrum. So I think definitely, and, and even with the app with the complaints, I think there's a lot of things we can add to make them more measurable. So thank you guys for your input, and I don't see it as an issue at all.
Councilmember Reed?
Be curious to see how my colleagues feel, but to Councilmember Newsma's point about what we're receiving calls about, I'm not receiving calls about catalytic converter thefts. And not to, I mean, it's clearly happening, right? It's, it's happening, and, you know, you hear about it. I'm pretty sure insurance covers catalytic convert, no, if someone steals you?
We, we can get rid of that. When these goals became up, that was a trend that we were dealing with. I was able to address the motor vehicle thefts, but that was still out there. Those are still around nationally and locally. But I have no problem if we get rid of that because I'll be working on some of the other stuff regarding the goals that you guys can influence.
Yeah, and property crime, yeah, what was stated here is that maybe a more general goal around property crime. Also, I, I don't see anything around, take another look, around violent crime. To me, that's, that's, to me, that's the most important metric. I don't, I'd like to go a whole term with no one in Evanston killed in the city of Evanston, particularly by someone who is within our reach that lives in the city of Evanston.
You know, council member, we had the situation in my presentation. We are, we are addressing that.
If I can jump in, unless somebody is before, if we're using, like, things that we're hearing about, I mean, certainly what Councilmember Reed just stated is, is one of them. Package theft, I probably hear more about that than, you know, catalytic converters, although I know catalytic converter thefts are happening, but I just want to throw that out there. If we're using that to determine what type of goals we have. Also, I'd be curious to know if there's a way to retract, like, local recidivism, especially among, you know, juveniles who might be eligible for some of our diversion or restorative justice programs. I think that might be a, a goal to add. So Chief, I don't, and I guess I don't, if you have any response, that's fine, but I don't, you don't need to say anything now. But I'd like us to think about adding something around local recidivism, people that we're seeing a lot through our administrative process, adjudication process, seeing if we can come up with some ways to strengthen our restorative justice program and diversion program.
I think that'd be different, difficult to fall into public safety just because, you know, some of the program goes through parks and rec, public health. So I think it may be something that's more broader that we, maybe me and you can sit down on and try to track it. But, you know, some of those cases go over to the Parks and Rec Department. We don't track it from there.
Add, as Councilmember Newsma said, public safety isn't all on the police department. It's across various departments.
The, the new, it's CARE, the CARE card, or the CARE program that you told us about in our, in our recent council meeting. That seemed like a great program, and maybe that's something we add to this list. Maybe that, maybe we strike the police app since that's already been rolled out and we add the implementation of the CARE program.
Which ties into Councilmember Burns' point, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's not an issue at all. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, that's, I'm going to call it now because I think the longer we keep it open, the more additional things are going to get added and the less clarity there is going to be on what to move on. So the, I would say, I would say council should be presented and certainly anybody who either wants to be involved in the process, or by which we get to that, or anybody who said something that you guys didn't fully understand that you want to check in with should be involved in, in the process. But, but, you know, those conversations should then produce an updated version of this that council should be presented with at the appropriate time. You know, maybe at the end of the committee, committee hearing. So it's like, this is, this, this discussion plus some back-channel conversations and some back-channel work will essentially be parallel to what, like, EDC is going to be doing on the financial recommendations. At once, except for CARP. Even CARP, maybe.
Just real quick, why, why don't we want it to go to Human Services? I understand that it's just council, but there's also, you know, to Chief Stewart's point, that the example that I provided or the item I provided is not under just EPD's purview, but other, other departments. And we frequently have not only, not only the Chief Stewart there, but also our Health Director. And on many occasions, yeah, Audrey, you know, Director Thompson is there as well. So I don't think that's a terrible venue to, if, since we're sending everything else to a committee, I don't think that's a terrible idea, especially if we want to run it by staff.
I would second that if that was a motion to send it to.
I mean, it wouldn't be my recommendation because I think it's going to be more, more time, more complexity, and other long discussion that's going to be probably a little bit inconclusive. And so I, I wouldn't be my recommendation, but if folks want to do that.
Yeah, I think if, if Chief Stewart is going to go back, take what we, you know, our feedback, that would be a good venue where, you know, she could-
Five members of council.
Yeah, she could present what, you know, what, what they've come up with, and we can quickly react to it and send it forward to council.
Also, Allison just reminded me that there's not a meeting of Human Services until December. So that's-
Is that?
Why is that?
True.
Because I guess there wasn't-
There's nothing to talk about?
There's, there wasn't much on the November agenda. I think we're probably, I'm going to break some news, we'll probably wind up having a special meeting of council for the purposes of the stadium issue on that night. The night that would have been the, the November Human Services Committee meeting. So the combination of that likely occurrence with the fact that there just wasn't that much on the agenda, I think, led to a decision to just postpone it.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. Well, Chief Stewart, I'll certainly reach out to you and we can talk.
No problem. Thank you, council member. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Chief. So this brings us to-
You guys are good with me? I gotta head to the game.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks so much. So that brings us now to public health. So who has thoughts or, and I, we're a little bit, this is going to be a little bit more complicated, I think, because I do think some of these issues are either new to some of us or, or raise obvious questions. And I don't think the Director Agua is available this morning. But go ahead, Councilmember Reed, followed by Newsma.
Yeah, I, same thing, more measurable goals. I think to reduce citywide smoking is a measurable goal. Council, we're looking at policy in the Human Services Committee that could aid in this. But after, you know, if we're looking at specific goals after some research and some, some thinking, I don't know if I personally would support continuing or expanding the guaranteed income pilot program. I think the idea is an interesting one. I think we've contributed to the body of work there. But if we're thinking about, you know, all of the benefits of it, of just getting money in people's hands, you know, maybe a guaranteed jobs program is better than just giving folks money. And if we're talking about people who have disabilities or who, for some reason, are unable to work, that's a different item. But if we want to create a productive, economically viable or vibrant city, I, I think a guaranteed income program isn't, isn't the best way to do that, but a guaranteed job.
So you're talking about a municipal job guarantee?
I'm saying if we were to go after something, that that would be a better policy than a guaranteed income program. And so with that said, I just would not support, you know, this being a specific goal to continue and expand the guaranteed income pilot program.
So there's research being done about the current program. So when are we expecting a report on that?
Researchers claim they don't have any information yet for us. They're doing their next big push of, you know, round of surveys soon-ish. The nice thing about doing this in the future is that the state got rid of their research requirement, so we wouldn't have to pay for any research in the future because there's a lot of research that says these programs are really great. They help people get jobs and keep jobs because they can then afford the transportation to get to the job, that kind of thing. So we don't need to do any research to know that these programs work. The reason we did the research in the first place was that the state mandated it in order for people's existing benefits to be protected, and without that requirement, we just don't really need to do one. So for the next round, we wouldn't need to. But our current round of researchers, I don't know when they can get us, you know, this. To be honest, I don't know what it's going to tell us that we don't already know from this really robust round of research that exists from different states and municipalities and different types of programs. There's not one type of program or, you know, specific that we have questions about, really. They just work and they help lift people out of poverty.
Right, yeah. But it does, the first step would be for council to at least have some kind of evaluation of our own about the program and, you know, going forward, would we target the same populations, you know, so I.
Can, I just, I don't want to spill too much, but if we were to have another round of funding, staff has already talked about a pretty different program based on the information we have from our E-Plan. We would like to target young families in Census Tract 8092. The E-Plan shows that just generationally lifting up people specifically in the Census Tract that we can see from the data, you know, need the most help. So the goal would be families with at least one child, five or younger, in that Census Tract. We'd like to do $500 a month again. That's what we did this past round. So it'd be a very different demographic, but it's based on the data from our E-Plan. And we think with between like 1 and 1.5 million, we could probably cover, based on our census data, we think we could cover every eligible house in that Census Tract. So it'd be really exciting that, you know, we've thought about some specifics for that, but that's what we'd love to do for the next round, based on the information that we have.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the E-Plan because I, that seems to be what's missing in this set of public health goals. There's nothing that, that we, I'd like to see us pull other kinds of recommendations from the E-Plan to include here.
If I could just address that really quickly, that's where some of these come from, like the bike score and the smoking, those, and the guaranteed income program, those are based on the data from the E-Plan. We just didn't say, like in parentheses, this came from the E-Plan.
And so to measure smoking, we do that with a survey?
I believe we do that with, you know, I have to ask, is Ike on yet or no?
Yeah, I'm here.
Can you answer how we measure, I don't remember how we measure smoking data.
So the smoking data is data that we, well, good morning, everyone. This is Ike Ogbo, Director for the Health and Human Services Department. The smoking data is data that we pull from, particularly if we're looking at youth data from the schools, the data that is provided to us from the schools. When we're looking at overall data, we're looking at information submitted to databases such as hospitals and IDPH, and we are able to tabulate or extrapolate this information and direct it locally to make determinations regarding surveys and numbers and what have you. It's not always updated. Sometimes we are operating based on data that has been gathered two to three years ago, but that's pretty much the best we can do in terms of the data that we.
Thank you.
Using it to make determination for present operations.
Councilmember Reed has been in line for a while. Go ahead, Councilmember Newsma.
We talked about this a little bit under public safety, but mental health is a priority for me and priority for the fourth ward residents. I just want to make sure, whether it's here or under public safety, that we have a robust response and a timely response to individuals experiencing mental health crises on the street.
Yeah, I guess before going into too much detail on this one, I definitely think this should go to Human Services Committee. I don't know where people add on it. I have a few different concerns, want to see the E-Plan more reflected in it. Some of these, I think we need additional objectives. The E-Plan calls out different chronic illnesses and other things that I think other programs more directly address than guaranteed income. I think continuing it is a good thing, but it won't address, it won't necessarily address all of the concerns that the E-Plan called out. So I think human, not to go into detail, but, or to take up too much time going into detail in this meeting, but I do think that's something that should be referred to the Human Services Committee. We have a meeting coming up where we're going to be discussing an item where there's a request for ARPO funds to address things that were called out in the E-Plan. So I think this conversation would fit nicely at the next Human Services Committee meeting. Is that, is, humans, oh, what, I thought we just said November, Ike. Director Ogbo?
Yeah, absolutely.
Didn't you talk about November?
You're speaking, yeah, we discussed that it will be slated for the November meeting, which I believe is November 6th.
No, I know, but I missed that because the item that I'm talking about, the last time I talked to Director Ogbo, he said he had talked to you, Councilmember Vell, and that was, we were going to discuss it in November. So I missed that, okay, that. Can we just find another date then? Yeah, let's just find another date. I mean, I'm on the Human Services Committee, more than happy to attend, Councilmember Reed, I'm sure would be, Councilmember Hadekatis, I would, and Harris, I'd appreciate, because we got some really important stuff that I don't think can wait until December, including even this discussion. So sorry, I missed that, but I think we should just reschedule. We can make ourselves available for another Monday or whenever we meet. Or another day. I'll just do that out there. But we have some important stuff, and it really only impacts the people on the committee. So I mean, everybody's here now. Councilmember Hadekatis is shaking his head that he can do this. Would you mind? We don't have to pick a day. I don't say pick, I'm not saying pick a day right now, but are you okay with scheduling the Human Services Committee meeting? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed, okay. So Luke, can we get that rescheduled? All right, thank you. And I think this should just go to Human Services Committee to discuss.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes. I wanted to raise a few things. I heard Allison, sorry. So I don't know what we're doing with this. I guess if we are sending this to Human Services, there'll be time for discussion there. But I will say that from my research, the, there's a Census Tract in the eighth ward that has higher rates of childhood poverty than, you know, 8092, and there are a lot of metrics that I think oftentimes the eighth ward gets looked over for because the fifth ward has historically been the, you know, seen as the disenfranchised community and the predominantly black community. So just if we're moving forward with any guaranteed income pilot program, I'd love to see that. I don't want to do it, but I'm just saying if it's happening, yeah, I want, yeah, I want my ward to have its share. If it's going to happen, I will certainly make my arguments against it, and I think it's better to put folks to work, if they can work, than to just give them money. Unless we're at full employment, if we're at full employment, then guarantee folks income. But if we're not there, then I don't know if that's the best policy, most productive policy. Not going to argue that now. So are we agreeing that this is going to go to Human Services? And if so, I will make the motion to send this to the November Human Services meeting.
Yeah, I would ask if we could discuss this. Again, we have a conflicting, we have an item that is going to Human Services Committee that conflicts with, certainly with guaranteed income, especially at the amount that's being asked. And so, again, it's not to have that conversation today. I would ask if my colleagues can support just sending this to the Human Services Committee meeting, that we will reschedule. Do you want to make that motion?
I move that we refer the public health sub-goals to Human Services for the November meeting.
I second that.
So Councilmember Reed moves that the public health goal setting is bullets are sent to the Human Services Committee for their next meeting. Councilmember Burns seconds. Councilmember Vell? Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis? Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Burns? So with eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. And so just to quickly recap, we have one item that's been dispensed with, four items that have been sent to committees, and one item where enough input was given that the work will commence immediately. And that's our, that's a wrap.
Point of order, point of order. Since, I mean, the reason that we didn't want public safety to go to Human Services is because of the idea that it wouldn't be dealt with until December. But now that we have agreed that we'll have a November meeting, makes sense for public safety to also be discussed by the Human Services Committee in November.
I would recommend against it, but you guys do what you want to.
I recommend for it. So I'll move that we have, move the public safety discussion of the sub-goals to the Human Services Committee for its November meeting. Is there a second? All right, let's just leave public safety to the ether then.
Councilmember Vell?
Well, I just wanted to make a sort of an editorial, or it's a question under affordable housing, because I, we don't really need to discuss it. But, so the first bullet, ensure 50 new units of affordable housing in the pipeline. So would that be excluding the South Boulevard project that is coming to us momentarily?
That is the goal. It's to, the 50 is supposed to reflect things that aren't already even on our radar.
Right.
Because what we acknowledged was that it takes a really long time for these units to get online. And so between thinking of them and working on them and going through the whole process and then the building, you know, all of that. So these are things that we haven't even dreamed of yet.
Right. I just wanted to make sure of that point.
It's a great question, yeah.
And then staff, I assume has the timeline for the inclusionary housing ordinance revision in, by early 2024, that that seems to be a reasonable timeline. It could be mid to, early to mid, I don't.
Yeah, I think it's ambitious.
Yeah, we would agree with that. Early to mid would be better.
Better, yeah, okay. Thank you.
And, you know, obviously, the longer this process continues, the. All right. So Councilmember Kelly asks what our timing goal is for all of this. I think it's, it has been, it's been dramatically changed this morning, not for the, not for the quicker. I guess I would hope that the four different committees that have been given homework could do that, you know, with their next, I mean, these are mostly committees that meet monthly, and so I would hope that they have these conversations in November. Well, I mean, I think it's, I think it's kind of insane to do this in 2024, and I think doing it before the first, the only meeting in December is probably no longer on the, in the cards. So I would, I would propose that we have final approval of all of this in our December City Council meeting.
And just, you know, to state, like, if any of these meetings get moved or pushed or canceled for lack of other agenda items or something like that, you know, that's now a risk.
Councilmember Kelly?
We can also call a special meeting, like Finance and Budget. I mean, we're going to have to call probably a special meeting at Finance and Budget just to address the goals. So I mean, other committees could do that, too. That's why I just asked, if we have sort of a goal that we all have to get this together and have it ready, I think that's.
Right, because thank you for mentioning that. For Finance and Budget, I think they meet this Tuesday, so their agenda is already, it's either posted or it will be.
It is posted.
It's posted.
Right, so I just said we'll need to set a special one just for this.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for your input. I think Councilmember Kelly's point is very, very well taken, that we should be, I mean, I'm glad that you pushed me to say it out loud, that, and again, I don't think unfortunately doing this before the December meeting is particularly realistic. So I would say let's, let's, you know, as a sort of protocol or a neo-goal or a meta-goal, I think let's consider ourselves to have failed if we don't dispense with this in December of 2023. And speaking of dispensation, with nothing further to discuss, the October, whatever it is today, special meeting of the Evan City Council is adjourned, October 7.